Okay, thank you. I can just confirm Chair that we have all six commissioners online. If you'd like to do a roll call to confirm that everybody or six commissioners can hear and respond. I'll pass to you Chair.
Yeah, thanks very much Dave. And I'll just do a quick roll call of commissioners, starting with the US. Chris, are you there?
Here.
Bob?
I'm present.
Richard?
I'm here.
Thank you. Turning to the Canadian Commissioners. Peter?
Roger?
And Neil?
Yes, present.
Okay, that's great. Everyone's here, can hear clearly. And Dave, we already heard from you. Do you have others with you?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I have a small Secretariat staff support of Keith Janigan, Laura Erickson, and Ian Stewart, who will be able to intervene as requested throughout the meeting. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thanks Dave. And I see we have attendees of fifty-three. I don't know if that's fifty-three additional or fifty-three including the lines that we've already gone through, but nonetheless, we have fifty-three attendees. Their lines are muted, and so maybe I'll just go through the process and and you can add to it as well, Dave, if I missed something. But basically, we have in front of us few proposals that we would like the Commissioners to consider for adoption at this meeting for a decision. One is from the commercial sector for a season extension from the November fifteenth date to February twenty-first. And the other is from the recreational sector who are seeking carryover of some underage from up to ten percent to the two thousand and twenty-one season. What the process will be is that first off, we'll start with the commercial proposal, and then we'll follow that with the recreational. Dave will give an overview of the proposal that for each one of those in order. We then, as Commissioners in Canada, may add to that overview that Dave has for each one of the proposals. And then we would have people online that can submit questions or if they want to add to what has been discussed, we could hear from those. Dave, as my understanding is, you would collect those, those are all going to you. You would read those out to us Commissioners, and then we would respond or make some direction in case there was some other clarifications that are needed. And then there would be a discussion among Commissioners of each one of the respective two proposals that we're considering here today. Dave, if I'd missed anything or characterized it incorrectly, please correct how this will unfold. It's a bit of a new process. And so it would be interesting and useful to get feedback from attendees online as well how that's working and how transparent that we are following through with the special session decisions. So I'll stop there, Dave, and turn it to you and see if I've missed anything.
Thank you Chair. Yes, that's how we're going to help support the meeting. And just a reminder that for, as the Chair has just indicated, if there are stakeholders who would like to make comments or questions on the agenda item, it's under the Questions tab in your webinar portal. And then you just add your questions or comments to the agenda item, and we will ensure that they're presented and onto the screen for all attendees to view. So thank you.
Thanks Dave. And Chris, I'll just see if you had any comments about the agenda or the process?
Nothing additional. Paul, Mr. Chairman, I think you got it down and we can proceed.
All right, thanks Chris. So Dave, can you just give us a quick overview of the commercial was submitted by the Canadian Commercial Fisheries for two B?
Thank you Chair. And so I'm going to draw upon both support from Dr. Stewart and Ms. Erickson regarding a couple of the key components related to their expertise. So as the Chair has just pointed out, this is referring to Proposal A1, which is a proposed modification or amendment to Section nine of the IPHC Fishery, Pacific Halibut Fishery Regulations related to commercial fishing periods. So the purpose of the proposal from Canada is to outline considerations relating to a regulatory proposal from Canada to extend the 2020 directed commercial fishing period, or fishing season as commonly known, in IPHC Regulatory Area 2B from the current established fifteenth of November 2020 to the twentieth of February 2021. And included in the proposal on the first page under the purpose is the specific text regarding the proposal from from Canada. And I am going to read this in full, as it does provide the specific and direct context from Canada. So in quotation, DFO has received a request from the Halibut Advisory Board. Industry advisor members, including commercial vessel owners, seafood processors, and union reps in conjunction with the Pacific Halibut Management Association of British Columbia have proposed to extend the Pacific Region Commercial Pacific Halibut Season to February 2021 at twenty-three fifty-nine hours for the 2020 season only. They have made this request in order to increase market opportunities and alleviate the impacts caused by the COVID-19 pandemic crisis. Attached is a copy of their request. And the request states, "We will need to update quota management system with the modified commercial conditions of license for all brownfish HNL fisheries." Additionally, our quota officers will need to process a large volume of amendment requests in order to authorize boats to fish and land halibut past November fifteenth. So the more lead time they have for this, the better. There's also some outstanding thoughts on port sampling requirements and perhaps compelling fishermen to land in one versus the other post-November fifteen. Finally, there is a need for fishermen to make business plans for their operation. And so this second paragraph is all about the operational need to make the decision intercessionally. Now, we've outlined, the Secretariat has outlined in this summary paper, Proposal A, a number of key topics for consideration for the 2020 fishing period extension proposal. These include biological stock assessment, fishery regulations, and also financial impacts, among others. And so we're going to just step through some of these general topics for consideration as you deliberate on these decisions. And so for the first two, in terms of the biological and stock assessment implications, I'm going to pass to Dr. Ian Stewart to give a very quick summary of those elements for consideration. So Dr. Stewart, I'll pass to you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson, and good afternoon Commissioners. The Secretariat staff considered two primary biological considerations with regard to this request. The first was whether this request would likely result in additional mortality. And the answer there is no because of the use of TCUIs and the spawning potential ratio as a basis for our harvest control rules. This request would not correspond to any additional mortality. The second consideration we made was with regard to timing of mortality relative to the spawning period. And as has been discussed in the past with with regard to consideration of year-round seasons, we believe the Pacific Halibut stock is being exploited at a rate where we are not relying on individual fish to spawn prior to their harvest. That is not, we do not think that's occurring in the Pacific Halibut stock. And therefore, we find that there's no likely risk associated with biological considerations for extending the fishing period either to the thirty-first of December or to the twentieth of February 2021. I'll speak to the second component here as well, which is stock assessment and data availability. Again, for the stock assessment, there are two considerations here. The first is just the process of projecting forward incomplete data series. And this is standard practice. We do this with many data series on an annual basis. And although this corresponds to slightly more uncertainty as we move into the decision-making process, this is generally not a problem, either procedurally or technically for the stock assessment. So a projection to December thirty-first is really in line with standard procedure that we use for other data sets. However, if such a fishing period were to extend beyond December thirty-first into 2021, this mortality would need to be considered as part of the 2021 mortality limits. And this is for several reasons. The first is that the stock assessment treats consistently the biology, the natural mortality, and the spawning period such that our reference points are always consistent with regard to being after a season's fishing and before the next season. That allows us comparability in our reference points across the time series. Therefore, we would need to account for any mortality that occurred after December thirty-first as part of the 2021 mortality limit process. That's all I have on the stock assessment and biology. I'll pass back to Dr. Wilson.
Thanks very much. For other topics of consideration include the IPHC Fishery Regulations and also contracting party coordination. And in that regard, I'll pass to Secretary Erickson.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Wilson. So to accommodate a change in management measures, the Commission itself would take less than twenty-four hours, as we have demonstrated earlier this year. However, the relevant domestic contracting parties have indicated in the past that they need up to five weeks to publish their revised fishery regulations. And domestic legal advice would be required to determine whether these processes could be shortened or the time shortened for this. And particularly whether it could be extended into the 2021 fishing period, given these are 2020 mortality limits. So IPHC would need to seek the advice of the contracting parties. And particularly whether, how the fishery may be impacted or the regulations may be impacted if the fishery is extended through to February. And whether the fishery regulations are amended at the ninety-seventh session of the IPHC Annual Meeting in January 2021. And then in addition, as far as contracting party coordination, we do throughout the year and certainly leading up to the meeting cycle, the IPHC works closely with Fisheries and Oceans Canada, as well as NOAA Fisheries. And as well as United States of America State Agency staff to coordinate the development and implementation of any changes to our annual fishery regulations. So we would need to continue to do this, given looking at extending the fishing period through the twentieth of February 2021.
Thank you very much Laura. Additional considerations are the financial implications associated with extending the fishery to the, into February of 2021. At the moment, we have it listed as increased cost Canada, meaning that there are just increased costs specific to the Canadian landing ports. And in this regard, we would need for year-round staffing to extend past the current November end of season through to the proposed February fishing period closure. This would allow for an IPHC port sampler or fisheries data specialist in the two landing ports or one landing port, depending on however the Commission would like to proceed, to continue sampling the directed commercial halibut landings up until the closure of that extended period. It would be anticipated that there would be additional Headquarters Secretariat time associated with covering the coordination of the field staff in those Canadian ports. We have included a rough estimate of what that may look like in terms of field staff salaries, the additional components, the salaries and benefits for the two ports, Port Hardy and Prince Rupert, where we have staff who are currently on contract and their contracts end at the end of the current fishing period. Support staff for those two individuals and the associated expenses with that. And of course miscellaneous suppliers to continue to sample throughout that period. And so we have an approximation of fifty-six thousand dollars that would be required to cover that expense. So while we can certainly accommodate the extension, there's certainly no problem from the Secretariat's operational perspective. At the moment, that additional fifty-six thousand dollars isn't budgeted, and we would either need to make other reductions within the budget to cover those additional expenses or seek external funding, whether that's from Canada or another source. In terms of fishery and market effects, the directed commercial fishery in IPHC Regulatory Area 2B is currently on track with past year's landings. And this paper referred to the thirty-first of August landings regarding the most recent update for British Columbia. If we go to the IPHC website, if you haven't already used it, you can find the links to the three-year average. And if you select British Columbia, for example, it gives an idea of where the fishery is this year, which is the green line in relation to the percentage of fishery limit landed in previous years. And so you can see that it's lower than the most recent, most recent three years commercial fishery landings. So these numbers are as of thirty-first of August, but the latest numbers are available on the website, as I just pointed out. And for the commercial fishery, it's obviously higher than this current level, and I can bring that up on the screen once we have the general discussion of the proposal. There are other considerations that are certainly not within the realm of the current realm of the IPHC Secretariat's responsibility. And so we've made some general indicators of points the Commissioners may wish to consider, such as the feasibility of winter fisheries, fish sales and processing capacity within the winter months, and also the current influx of Pacific Halibut from the Russian fleet, as well as the Atlantic, Atlantic halibut fisheries. So we have some additional points there, as I said, that are worth Commissioners considering. But the conclusion regarding those market aspects are the fishery and market effects of an extension of the current 2020 fishing period through to the twentieth of February are not within our current realm. And thus, we're stating that it's unknown for the Secretariat. However, they are likely to be specific to individual fishing operations, and in this case, IPHC Regulatory Area 2B. In terms of an overall summary, therefore, the proposed fishing period extension to the twentieth of February 2021, there are no substantive biological reasons to avoid an extension in the Secretariat's opinion for the directed commercial fishery. Or for that matter, for the USA fleet, other than the financial consequences that we've detailed in this paper. If contracting parties were able to commit to covering any additional sampling expenses as ad hoc payments, or as I mentioned, for the Commission and the Secretariat to make modifications to our current budget, then there would also be no financial implication, sorry, impact or obstacle for us to implement the proposed change. So with that, Chair, we'd simply indicate that the Commission note this paper, Proposal A1, and make the deliberations on how you would like to proceed with the proposal. And so I'll pass back to you Chair.
All right, thanks Dave. I'll just see if there's any further comments from Canadian Commissioners about the proposal before opening it up further.
Paul, it's Peter.
Yes, Peter.
Yeah, so I'll just probably give a little bit of brief understanding of why this proposal came forward, why this particular proposal came forward, and kind of the idea behind it. So once COVID hit, the Minister asked if there was anything they could do to help keep business going and float and all those kind of things. And so a group of buyers, harvesters, and the like, they looked at a lot of different ideas. One thing that came out was we wanted to harvest the fish this year. We see it as a protein source for the country. We wanted to get it out of the water. The issue was that the market was very different. So we went from a service, food service, that bought, you know, up to seventy percent of the product to to retail, which, you know, traditionally only bought around thirty percent. So the retail market only could handle so much product at a time. There was higher demands for retail, just through grocery stores and everything. People wanted to eat local. This kind of led to us having smaller trips as a whole. So in order for the buyers not to flood the market, they worked really well together. The industry worked very well together to kind of dribble the fish in through smaller trips to satisfy the the retail market and keep pricing relatively strong. So because of that, we kind of, so we did look at other options and ideas, but this one suited us the most was just give us a bit more flexibility in terms of trying to get this fish out of the water. So we were having these discussions in March, April, and into May. And we actually put this proposal forward, May twentieth, to the Department. So we are still behind traditionally where we are, roughly six to eight percent, I believe. And we're concerned that it's going to be harder to do these smaller trips because of weather windows diminishing. And we don't want to flood the markets with with the large deliveries right at the end of the season. In Canada, buyers generally do not do well when they freeze fish. Another problem that we're going to, that we are and we have, is crew. There's still a good portion of fish left in the water right now that have to get out. And just to, people are fearful about going back to work. People are fearful being on a workplace that it's hard to social distance. And so people are choosing, many crew are choosing to take government programs that were actually just announced in late August for fishermen. And that subsequently are just kind of rolling out right now. And people are finding it very difficult to find crew to harvest these fish. So the idea behind this proposal was just about flexibility. Nobody knows what the future will bring, and we just wanted the flexibility to harvest this, you know, halibut as a protein source for Canada and ensure that it made the marketplace. So yeah, if there's any other questions. And I'd like to add that just on a biological standpoint, if we had thought that there was going to be, or if there was any biological reason not to do this, we would have probably, we would have pursued a different idea or option. But as there is none, this is the option we chose. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Peter. Dave, I just wondered whether there are any comments at this point, or input from attendees online?
Yes, thanks Chair. We do have a number of comments incoming. I guess at this point it would be worthwhile just reminding attendees, if you do have questions or comments, please put them into the questions or comments box that's shown in the webinar. Once you hit enter and it's sent to the Secretariat, the Secretariat will lift those comments and questions into an Excel spreadsheet. And so we can display that in just a moment. We're collating a couple of them, Chair. So if there was any more discussion amongst Commissioners before we referred to them, that would certainly assist us with coordination.
Yeah, okay, thanks Dave. Just see if there's any other comments. Neil, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
I don't think so, Paul. I think Peter's summary was helpful in terms of the background or rationale for how the Department understood this proposal.
Okay, thanks. Chris, I'd turn over to you to see if you wanted to ask any questions about the proposal, or do you want to wait for Dave to collate the comments that are coming in, and we'll deal with those first?
Yeah, I don't want to get too far into discussion before we hear those comments, but I do have a question and maybe a general comment. Ian said that any harvest past December thirty-first would count against 2021 mortality limits. So I'm trying to understand the math on that. For example, if you had a season extension and a million, let's just say, for example, half a million pounds were taken after December thirty-first, how would that get accounted for? Because if it came off of Canada's 2021 limit, it would be the same effect as foregoing it in twenty. Maybe I'm confused about that math.
Sure. Ian, if you'd like to respond through the Chair, thank you.
Thank you through the Chair, Commissioner. This is in fact exactly the topic we're probably going to discuss on the second proposal as well, which is the question of how the yield is calculated with regard to carryover beyond the current calendar year. And so as I mentioned, we use December thirty-first as the cutoff for collating fishery mortality and also the biological processes in the calculation of the reference points. So in that regard, the yield that we will estimate for 2021 will be as of the end of the year, which means that anything that was not caught in 2020 will be included in those yield estimates. As Commissioner Oliver noted, in order to accommodate this in the 2021 mortality limits, any catch after the thirty-first of December would have to be accommodated somewhere in the TCEY calculations for 2021 explicitly, because that would be when the calculation of yield would be for the year 2021.
Okay, I think I got it. Just, Mr. Chairman, a general comment or two. We on the US side looked at, I guess, a similar proposal earlier in the year that came to the North Pacific Council, the extended season and a potential carryover. And for, as well as the adjusted charter management measures in Area 2C and 3A, the Council didn't take any action on the first two, similar to the proposal we're talking about now, for a number of reasons. Many of them were centered on the multiple Alaska regulatory and administrative processes that are linked to the current season closures. But also, I think there was some discussion that this is, you know, an issue that deserves a, more appropriately, considered at an annual meeting where you have time and people have know what's coming and how to prepare for it, both from a business planning perspective and a management and regulatory perspective. I do recognize COVID, it puts us in a very unique situation. But for many of the same, I've heard a lot of concern. This came late, you know, pretty late in the year here. And I've heard already a number of concerns from US fishermen and processors, which are sort of the flip side of many of the things Peter outlined for why you were seeking this extension, which is, you know, there's not an interest in extending the season on the US side. There's the concern of have, there's not going to be processors taking fish after November fifteenth, from what I understand. So you would have a frozen, a market issue and competition potentially with a fresh, fresh halibut on the market year-round against a frozen inventory. I think those are some of the primary concerns I've heard. So I'm going to be pretty keenly interested in hearing what we, the comments we get from the stakeholders. When I look at the graph, it's the catch rate and catch levels for 2B are slightly below previous years. Pretty much very, pretty slightly below on average and right in line with 2017. So when I look at that going into week forty here, it does look to me like there's still the opportunity to catch your fish within the current season closure. it does look to me like there's still the opportunity to catch your fish within the current season closure or perhaps shortly thereafter. I'm having a little trouble with the need to go all the way to February. When I look at that catch graph and coupled with concerns we have that I mentioned about the market. So I'll just stop there with those general comments and put people on, give people an idea of what's going through my mind and as they provide us comments. And I'm just be happy to have the discussion after we hear those comments. Or any other commissioner's thoughts, of course. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Well, Peter may want to add to this. He did touch on it, have the timeframe of a commercial proposal that was put together back in May of this year. And it did go to our minister, which took some time to get a reply, but we did. And so it's now in front of us. And so I think, you know, whether it's now September or whether it's back in May, I don't think the overall premise has really changed, looking for a season extension to, in response to COVID. And this is in response to that, to deal with the too many challenges we've had across all regulatory areas of dealing with COVID for this year, as well as the survey that was undertaken this year as well, all had to deal with changes in response to COVID. And I guess from my point of view, I see the commercial request as reasonable way forward to provide some flexibility for the commercial sector to ensure that they get as much of the TAC as they wish. I can't speak to why the North Pacific Fish Management Council chose not to take any action on similar requests. Kind of leave that up to them to decide how they wish to proceed. But we see that there's no biological reason to implement this or impeding moving ahead with implementing this. And I think we've proven that we've made timely decisions. And I don't think the timing of September is too late to make one now. I don't know if Peter or Neil wants to add, but, and anything that I've added, but that's kind of how I see it at this point.
Yeah, Paul, I just say that you're correct. Like, this is just about flexibility. And I do understand the concerns about competition. But as highlighted in the document, the competition already exists. If a 12-month year, East Coast fishery that's delivering fresh halibut, you have a Russian inventory frozen that's in direct competition. As well as there's now Norwegian farmed halibut that is hitting our marketplace. So I do believe the competition already exists. And I do believe that it's not going to be a great number. As you pointed out, we are not terribly far behind. There may be some upcoming challenges, we believe, that are gonna, when usually people ramp up their fishing, it might not be able to happen. That's our concern. And so in terms of 2017, that was an odd and peculiar year. There was a market correction within the system, within the season. And there was, in our area 2B, we have issues around leasing. And there was very much concern. So we were actually very much behind in that year, too. But
Sorry, Peter, you got cut off there, I think, or stopped.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, I was done. Sorry.
All right, Dave, how's that spreadsheet coming along?
Thanks, Chair. I can certainly bring it up. It's going to be a live document that we're populating. So as I projected, please do forgive the behind the scenes workings that you'll see. So far, we have two fully credited questions that are coming through and a couple of others that are being formatted down here. And so we'll get to those. So Chair, with your indulgence, the first comment or question is coming from Patricia Phillips. And the question is, would mortality as a percentage of harvest rate increase or decrease? The current four-month non-fishing period ensures a positive degree of untouched biomass that improves increased biomass. And Chair, with your indulgence, this is a question for Dr. Stewart. So I'll pass to him to respond, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Great. Go ahead, Ian.
Thank you through the chair. No, the answer is, as long as we accurately accounted for all the mortality that actually occurs either in 2020, 2021, or both, this would not result in a change in the harvest rate or the level of fishing intensity, unless that was a decision explicitly made by the commission as part of the 2021 mortality limit setting process.
Okay, thank you. Then the second question is from Linda Benkin. And the question and comment is, this has been a tough year for all fishermen with prices down by 40 to 60%. British Columbia catch is only slightly behind past years. The frozen market will be flooded this winter. Fresh fish on the market will significantly depress prices even further for frozen product. This proposal will lower the value of the Pacific halibut harvest for the majority. All US fishermen and any BC British Columbia fishermen who have filled their quota to provide relief to a small number of fishermen, Alpha does not support the proposal. So it's more a comment. Thank you, Chair. Then we have an additional question comment from Chris Spora. As a result of COVID-19, Area 2B directed commercial fishery landings have been and continue to be behind last year's numbers. A significant portion of the TAC remains to be harvested, and there is concern that the catches could fall even further behind last year. The amount of fish landed per fishing trip is down this year compared to 2019. It is taking more trips to get the Pacific halibut TAC out of the water. We are now entering the fall and the weather will worsen. There will be fewer and smaller windows of opportunity where vessels can safely fish. In addition, vessels are increasingly finding it difficult to retain crew as many crew members are concerned about COVID-19 and are choosing to remain home with their families rather than risk the work environment. And that's the three questions comments that we currently have on this proposal, Chair. And if you would like to entertain additional questions or comments, again, I would encourage any attendees to put them into the question box. And the secretariat will ensure that they're posted and pasted into this table for addressing by the commission. So over to you again, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for going through those. Very much appreciated, Dave. I only have maybe an overarching comment. I think it's been, and I think I said it earlier, I think it's been a very tough year for all harvesters of halibut, whether it be commercial and or recreational in response to COVID. And so I think this proposal is trying to provide a bit of flexibility to commercial sector and don't see that it has the impact that for the amount of fish that we'll probably harvest in the coming months if it's agreed to. So Chris, I guess unless there's more comments, where would you like to go to next?
Well, let me just get understanding where we are process wise. Are we going to take up the other proposal and hear public comment on that as well before we move to taking any debate or deliberation or action? Are we going to dispense with this issue in its entirety and then go to the other one?
I was proposing the latter, that is, that we would deal with this proposal, then go to the next one.
And so am I to then understand that there is no further public comment on this, this specific proposal? That was it?
Through the chair, yes, we have, currently have only those three specific comments that have been entered in through the portal as per the agreed process. If you were to move to close that, I would make the recommendation that you pause for five minutes to allow stakeholders to further consider and add additional comments or questions before we move on, as one possible suggestion, Chair.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to do that. And maybe while we're, instead of just pausing for five minutes, we could have a, I had a, maybe another question or two. And then we can see if anybody else, you know, signs up for a public comment while, while, while I ask my question.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know. This may be to Peter. And I'm trying to really get a handle, Peter, we've got two months left, two months left still in the current season. And, you know, yes, we have the COVID situation, but I don't know that it's any worse now than it's been over the past several months when people have been out fishing at almost the same pace they have been when I look at the graph. Well, I'm just not seeing that, that gap, that gap that shows that people aren't able to fish. So I, how much is it that you, over the next two months, people think they won't, simply won't be able to physically catch the fish because of various COVID-related conditions versus they'd rather catch the fish after November 15th than over the winter? And again, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say it's the former. So people want to get the fish out of the water. Buyers have a desire to get the fish out of the water. We're just unsure, like I said, we're having a bit of a crewing issue. The crew is in short supply in BC. There's not many people that want to pursue this line of work, and particularly right now, and particularly when there's certain packages that are coming out. It's somewhat incentivized not going out for an end of the year trip. So most, most halibut boats, they do, at the end of the year, they gather up crew from other fisheries and they go out and go pursue getting their allocation of the water for those that choose to do it in the fall. So the idea is there is a concern that they won't be able to do that. But I do think that there is a real, it isn't that people are going to want to choose to fish in December, January, or even late November. I just think it's a flexibility issue. And there's a bit of a concern that we are behind, you know, not as much as some areas, but we are behind and we're concerned that we're going to fall farther behind. That's not the hope, but just a bit of flexibility in terms of making sure that doesn't happen for us, is what we're asking.
I don't know if I have a question, I mean, a comment, I guess. I, you know, I've, I've always kind of had the philosophy that we chat, once we set our, you know, shares, each party should be, have power over, you know, how and when they harvest and kill their allocated halibut. As long as it's harm neutral, if you will, or, you know, sort of, no harm to the other party. And so, you know, and like, like I would characterize the action we took earlier this year with the charter regulations in 3A and 2C, appreciate that. And, you know, similarly, when we talk about the potential rollover in your other proposal. But I, you know, so far, we've only had a couple of public comments, but I've gotten a lot of input from stakeholder holders over the past few weeks directly that have expressed pretty significant concern with the market implications. And so I'm still having, when I look at the catch statistics and I appreciate the need for flexibility, I'm still concerned about that much open-ended flexibility, given the, what I've heard to be fairly significant market concerns from our US stakeholders. So I'll pause there and see if other comments or maybe if there's any other public comment.
Paul, it's Neil here. Can I make a comment?
Yeah, please go ahead, Neil.
I think, Chris, I hear that concern and you can read it in Linda's comment as well. I guess I would, I would just want to kind of test that a little bit. I bet you that we could probably agree that not many fishermen are going to choose to fish in the months of December, January, February by choice, just given that conditions really do get pretty nasty to be out at that time of year. And so my, my sense is that there's a pretty strong likelihood most of the catch will be out of the water by November 15th. And what we're really talking about is, is kind of like the, the final dregs. And so I do, I guess I have a bit of skepticism about how, what is likely to be, to end up being a pretty small volume of fish really would impact, you know, a market that in either is kind of nationwide or even continent-wide, particularly given these other sources of fresh competition that already exist. And just wonder if we're, if we're more worried about the scope of impact on that than we really need to be.
So, Chairman?
Yeah, well.
I don't know if anybody has re-signed up or we have any additional commenters. I was kind of holding some my, my thoughts until we had exhausted the public. Could you have David check that out?
Sure. Dave, did you have any more comment?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We do have a couple of additional. The next one is from Peggy Parker, and the comment is as follows. "We all agree that everyone has been hit hard by the pandemic and are facing similar marketing challenges. We further agree that the impacts on our market have been and will continue to be incredibly challenging. Those in favor of extending the season from November 15th, 2020 to February 20th, 2020, 21, I'm not sure what the next word is, the coronavirus pandemic is the main, maybe it cites the coronavirus pandemic as the main reason needed for the extension. Those opposed to the extension note that this proposal would give a competitive advantage in the market to only one regulatory area over the other seven regulatory areas. They also note that no one can yet gauge the full, full impact of this season extension will have on the market in terms of fusion in product identification and price or potential changes in product quality. And forgive me for stumbling through a few of the words there. It might have just been some typos. So that's the comment from Peggy Parker. There's also a comment from Kathy Hansen. "SEFA does not support this proposal. There is fairness issue between countries' marketplaces. The conference board always requests a longer season than is granted and told by the secretariat that they need to finish the season earlier. So how would this extended season work on providing the data gathering? And with your indulgence, Chair, I'm just going to correct to this statement. The secretariat does not tell anybody what they should be doing. And we've specifically not put up proposals on season dates until requested by the commission at the last meeting. So just a correction there. There is another comment from Stephen Rhodes, which states, "SPC would like to state our opposition to extending the Pacific halibut season. This will deflate the value of our frozen inventory. Every pounds of fish, fresh fish- Pounds of fish, fresh fish. Outcompetes the frozen inventory. And there's a comment from Jesse Kiplinger. Approving to extend to be season gives a short term market advantage to a limited. Group of harvest harvesters harvested that could create some issues for Pacific Halibut buyers in other parts of the I P H C jurisdiction. The decision will potentially come at a time when those other buyers are too late to amend their buying and processing plan. And that's all the comments and questions we have at the moment. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Dave. So Bob, I think those are the additional ones.
Yeah. So I I just wanted to add that. Over the last. Couple of weeks or when this census information or request came to be generally publicly known. I've talked to representatives from. Icicle and Pacific Choice. The best occurs Northport. Icicle. And. They're they express similar concerns with the. Competing with their fresh versus their frozen product. I I know that a number of my boats, I think about ten days ago. Were rotating out of the Bering Sea and the Aleutian Islands and they. Probably delivered about altogether about six boats, probably a couple hundred thousand pounds to Westward Seafoods. And I'm pretty sure that had Westford known that they might have to compete. Against frozen fish, they may not have paid the price they did. In in Dutch Harbor. Because that fish is generally going to go frozen out that out west. So we are getting that. That argument from our processors. I personally am in favor of an extended season. I I like the idea of of either. An earlier opening or extending on the on the back end. Recognizing that we may not have every processor participating. Because you need some volume to keep these plants open and and that doesn't always come through in in December. But I think that decision needs to be made. At our annual meeting so that the buyers know upfront what they're getting into when they're buying. Fish in August and they have to freeze it and. I I I acknowledge that Peter's observation that. We're already competing with some. Russian frozen and. And some Eastern Canadian maritime. Fresh, but there is a bit of an offset with transportation costs at this point, not much and. Frozen usually gets beat out by that anything fresh. So I guess I'm kind of winding up with concerns that Chris expressed. And. But not entirely a no. But, you know, because I I'm looking at where you at that green line this year goes and. If you needed a week, ten days or something like that to finish it up. And then have a serious discussion next year about a more. Extended season. That's that's kind of where I'm at right at the moment, Mr. Chair.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Paul, Mr. Chairman, Chris, if I could ask a process question for you or Dave.
Sure.
I just as as we're having the discussion, I I'm getting pained with some some emails and text messages from different constituents that. Who say they have submitted. Letters, they submitted letters presumably to the I P H C on comment letters on this and not apparently a number of organizations and. I don't know where those letters are or, you know. Whether you're. Dave or of knowledge of those letters or they somehow posted somewhere to the extent people, all of these folks aren't necessarily online here. Commenting orally, there have been apparently a number of letters submitted.
Thanks, Commissioner Oliver and through the Chair. The short answer is no, with the exception of one we have received immediately prior to this meeting. From Peggy Parker. Otherwise, no, we have not received any letters, so I would. Just simply indicate that to any stakeholder that we have not received any other letters, and so if you. Would have sent one, please resend it. We can certainly provide that. As soon as we receive them, and if you have a particular comment to do, try and put it in the comment box now, but just to just to reaffirm, we have received one letter. Start of this meeting. From Peggy Parker, but no other letters. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Chris again, and I I don't know what you want to proceed. I we don't have a motion on the floor per se, but. I I did want to maybe respond and some and point that Neil made and. That was, you know, that maybe we're a little bit over fearful because there's probably not that many people that are going to choose to fish in the winter. And it so season extension could to some degree be a moot point. But on the other hand, I we really don't know, and if we announce today that we're going to extend the season, it's possible, I'm not saying likely, but. Possible that everyone could choose to stop fishing for the next two months and save all their unused quota for. January. For our December for perhaps, you know, legitimate market. Reasons. Which would be detrimental potentially to the concerns that Bob and Rich and I have expressed. So I'm not saying that's likely, but it is possible. That's the other part is if 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 we really think it's likely, we're going to harvest most of the fish by November fifteenth and. That we're really talking about that last trickle of fish that we don't want to lose. Then maybe a much shorter season extension might be something. That I I could. Get my head around or find myself be able to support. You know, if someone were to say. It it some, I I'm assuming some of these fishermen have already called out their quota, some of them maybe. Ten percent away from their quota, some of them maybe are saving it up till the end, I don't know, but if we had some. A proposal rather than a blanket. Season extension all the way to mid-February, we said something like. A person could catch ten percent of their I F Q. App between November fifteenth and December fifteenth and. That would an additional month would be a total of three months from today. For people to catch their fish, I might be able to, I might be able to support something like that. So I said that without there being a motion on the floor, so apologize if I'm.
Paul, could I respond?
Yeah, for sure. Go ahead, Peter.
I I honestly don't believe that just because of what kind of marginal. Values we're talking in terms of market, I don't expect the there to be a big surge in prices or something. But. I I would find it very difficult to believe that people would be able to get crew in January or December. Run out there to do a quick halibut trip. Myself, we've already missed our allocation generally. How it works in British Columbia is we have, we're maxed out in a block and most people choose to do their block. All in one lump sum, so that would be a matter of two, three trips. And that's how the the fishery generally proceeds, so. That's why there's a concern this fall that when guys go to get their lump. They might not have the crew or the capability and and I appreciate what we're asking for here is not. I mean, the date just aligns with the end of our season for a groundfish. That's why the date was chosen. But any sort of flexibility that that allows us to alleviate that concern to, you know, that. Worrying about that last weather storm and keeping crew together. Because there is a there is a serious fear of being on these boats where you can't socially distance. I've experienced it on my crew. I know many people that have experienced it and their boats are actually tied to the wharf because they just can't even find crew for other various fisheries. Like I said, this is about flexibility, any flexibility that's available. We're we'd be happy to consider.
See, Chris, it's Paul here. Appreciate your offer of. Maybe supporting something much reduced from the actual request, I think. The way you were casting it, there would be not possible for us to really deal with within our I T Q system. And so maybe something simpler rather than all the way to February, maybe a month's extension. Would provide enough room to try this out, to provide some flexibility for some fishermen that have, for whatever reason, not been able to fish. Still provide some additional opportunity. And takes into account some of your concerns, I I think about competition from. Fresh and frozen.
It probably, Paul, this is Chris, if you're looking for a response, I. I can't speak for Bob and Richard, I certainly want to hear what they have to say, the. The whole idea of the extension with two months left still. And does give me pause, given the market concerns that that I've heard, but. But to answer your question and speaking for myself. If if we. Are talking about. Given that extra month, which would then be through December fifteenth, which would now be three months from now. To give folks that flexibility that Peter described. There, I I I could support that, Paul, and I speak in for one U S Commissioner.
So. I guess make that a formal motion and so I. But I guess back to you, Richard and Bob. Whether you would support what I was proposing as a reduction. In time, just add an additional month to December fifteenth.
Paul, this is Richard, can you hear me?
Yep, can hear you now, Richard.
So I'd like to comment, I guess the. The comments I've been getting from stakeholders kind of align with the comments you've heard before, and I think the major concern was. Market competition between having fresh halibut on the market. You know, I'm I'm having a hard time getting a grasp as to how. Much of impact that would be, I mean. I guess I'm hearing from Peter that. This would be a small amount of halibut that might not. Impact the price prices much. But I have no way to judge that, but. So I think in the long run, when I went into February, there was a lot of issues. As well as the extended marketing window. But I'm inclined to, like Chris. If it was a shorter extension, like a month extension that. I think that's, you know, reasonable to see exactly what happened, gives that flexibility to Canada. And addressing some other concerns. That's my comments.
Thanks, Richard.
Yeah, did we? Dave, could we get David to put up how much fish is left in to be right now? I thought it was like a million five, but I can't remember. Commercially.
You there, Dave?
Yes, all right, we're just trying to bring it up on the screen. What's currently. It's not allowing us to to zoom in at the moment. So for regulatory area to be the commercial fishery. It has taken seventy four percent as of the fifteenth of September. And that's the most up to date figure we we have at this point in time.
Right, that that looks like about a million three left.
Sounds about correct, yes. Big mess.
Yeah. You know, I I I could go two weeks, but I I'm just reluctant to go much, much further, Paul. But. You know, other two commissioners, I think. If this is really tough because I. We got processors that. Are shutting down. Not sure if they're going to reopen next year. This this is difficult for me. To to extend it beyond just a couple of weeks, Paul, so that's where I'm kind of at, I think.
Paul, it's Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I don't know. If. If you have any thoughts on that, I think if we start to whether two or three weeks might be that. Provide enough that flexibility you were looking for. I think we're starting to split hairs a little bit when we get down to that, but it becomes more about. You know, the principle, maybe as much as anything. I I do think. When I look at the numbers and 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 if you believe that people are in fact going to go it. If which I kind of tend to believe people are gonna choose to try to catch their fish before the weather gets too snotty. And that we're probably talking about. A a pretty small amount of. Fish that are going to be harvested after November fifteenth. That and and given that, you know. While I I I I am concerned about the market issues that have been raised. I'm just, I'm a little like Bob, you know, I I'm not entirely comfortable with extending it a month, but 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 I I could go there. But is to with two or three weeks make a difference to to you all? Would would that be something that would still help get where you want to be and. Get all the U S Commissioners in a little more of a comfort zone? But I'm trying to, if it's a minimal impact, we're talking about. You know, I want to try to be as common as we can, you know, to our neighbors in the north. Well, Northware. Part of us and South of the others, but you know what I mean, and so. I don't know if two or three weeks is enough. Thoughts on that? I I'm trying to see if we can get somewhere that we could all support.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I I'll let Peter speak to whether two or three weeks are worth it. I. I the reason I said a month is that that would provide enough time to really. Make people make plans. I suspect that administratively, two to three weeks is going to, well, two is going to be a challenge for us to really deal with, and so these are the feedback I'm getting here just with some messages online, I guess, Chris, to. Answer about the two weeks. So I, you know, I I do respect the concerns that have been raised about. The potential. Impact, but I guess I stress the word potential and given that there's already market. Fresh on it, I just having a hard time seeing it, but I'm no expert in that area, so. Peter, I guess I'd turn it over to you about what Chris proposed of two to three weeks, whether that is worth it or not.
I wish I knew. This is about flexibility and not knowing. You know, I I assume that closer it got to Christmas, there probably isn't a big market for halibut is at that time anyway, but. I don't see people pushing to harvest their fish then. But, you know, this is all about flexibility and and. I'm not sure, I I wish I could answer that as always. Best as I can. I think that some people are confident that we'll even get the fish out by November fifteenth. However, others are not so confident, so. You know, it just it's that and and I would like to. you know, it just, it's that, and I would like to emphasize that the the push is to get the fish out of the water. I don't I don't think we're talking a large amount. I don't think this is a like I say, this plan came about in May when there was a lot more uncertainty. And there wasn't any strategic planning to, you know, harvest your fish sometime we'll eat. You know, most, most of what's been happening is business as usual, but just smaller trips and trying to deal with the different marketplace, so. That's what I got to see.
All right, thanks, Peter.
So, Chair, I I understand that Hannah has typed some more comments and maybe David could bring us up to speed on that.
Sure.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair, through the chair. A comment, another comment from Linda Bankin, I do not support an expanded season. Everyone made decisions based on the published season fishermen and issue processes. From Lyle Pierce, as a 2B fisherman that has already put their quota in our group, supports the idea of a one-year extended season. We are not talking about a lot of effort or fish being landed, and with the threat of COVID rearing its head again, markets are unstable, and it is proving more difficult to crew the vessels. This will give fishermen the flexibility to get their fish to market without having to take unnecessary risks. Our vessel did a IPHC winter Pacific Halibut Charter. The month of December was pretty much a write-off for catching halibut as the females are so full of egg that there was no room for food, sorry, baited food, and they would not bite. That is one of the reasons that Canada is asking for the February 20th season date. From Peggy Parker, my letter is on behalf of Hannah, not myself. I will add a section that is in my letter that the commissioners may find helpful, and that is about the process. It follows in quotations. Hannah cautions against the process of changing current management measures in season when impacts are coastwide and have not been communicated to all stakeholders earlier in the year. If the decision is made at the special session, the commissioners will be bypassing the time-honored process of engaging with all stakeholders. The Conference Board and the Process Advisory Board, as well as other advisory bodies such as the Scientific Review Board and the research, should be the Research Advisory Board on this issue. There are equity marketing issues for each regulatory area that is not given this extension. There may also be equity issues with Canadian fishermen who plan their year thinking the season is closing in November and thus cannot take advantage of the extension. Earlier this year, the IPHC convened a special session for the commissioners to consider changes that impacted only the sports charter fleets in 2C and 3A, which were triggered by trip cancellations caused by the virus. There was zero impacts beyond that sector and those two regulatory areas. We urge you to not consider proposal that have coastwide impacts at special session meetings, but continue to allow all stakeholders to discuss, study, and decide together what their advice advise will be at the annual meeting. Thank you. And then another comment from Angus Grount, we are currently experiencing a significant uptick in COVID cases in British Columbia. As we approach cold and flu season, there is a significant chance of another shutdown. Any added flexibility would be greatly appreciated, and that's all the comments we have at the moment. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thanks, Dave. So, Chris, I think we need to bring this to close. If you agree, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the season for one month in Canada in area 2B. I've got feedback that two to three weeks is not worth it, and so hence proposing that the season be extended for one month. And look for the US support to that proposal.
Paul, I'll second the motion for discussion. Because I did have another question and a possible amendment.
Okay.
We talked earlier, and and I maybe I'm splitting hairs now, I talked earlier about maybe a limit of, say, a person could catch up to 10% of their annual IFQ between November 15th and December 15th. Can you help me understand why that would be necessarily problematic if we were to impose such a cap? And I I don't even know what the effect would be, frankly, other than somebody that held more than 10% of their quota still on fish would obviously have to catch part of that before the end of, before November 15.
Could I take a stab at that, Paul?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so we're very different than, say, elastic Alaskan ITQs. We are not owner-operator. The quota just flows like a river all over the place. And so generally, there's not that many people that own a quota that actually fish. Greater than half, so we're very much different than how Alaska is set up, so that that quota has already been all leased and is on different vessels, and it would be very, I don't even know if it's possible to track, to be honest.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
Well, just on Peter's last point there, there would be a, unfortunately, a challenge on the department's part to be able to to, as Peter said, be able to track that. We don't, we don't actually have the administrative capacity to set up and then administer or oversee that kind of sort of specification, given all the complications that Peter was describing.
Great, thanks, Neil, for that explanation. So I don't know if you got all that, Chris, but that that's the issue, really. I just don't see that we have that ability to track it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I understand that. I understand that. I think I get it. So I I'm still experiencing a little discomfort. I would like to try to offer an amendment to your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And that would be to extend the season not through December 15th, but through December 7th. I believe that it, well, if I have a second, I'll explain. I'll speak to it.
Yep, am I permitted to second? Or does that need to be?
As far as I know, you are, Bob.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah, I think that, and again, I I I hesitate to try to split hairs, but I'm still trying to balance the discomfort I'm hearing from stakeholders. It seems to versus versus the desire to grant the flexibility, some flexibility that you're seeking. And recognizing, you know, some of the things that were pointed out, that it's likely that it's not going to be a huge amount of fish, it's likely that it's going to be that last trickle of fish, but it's, you know, given that we have two months still between now and November 15. It seems another three weeks should be ample time. You know, I know it's not the best weather of the year when you're getting to that time of year, but a three-week period, people know now that they have that extra three weeks, so it's two months and three weeks from now. I think it should give people that that three weeks to me is that is a seems like a reasonable balance of of balancing the market concerns against balancing the flexibility to get that last trip, making sure people have the opportunity to get that last trickle of fish. And so that that's basically my proposal, my amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, Richard.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm not clear on the Canadian. Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have a question on the Canadian side, like if the quarter is unfished. I mean, the US side, we can roll over some unfished quarter to next season. What is the policy there if you don't? You don't fish all your quarter.
Do you want to explain that, Neil?
Richard, it is similar in Canada in that there is a provision that allows for individual harvesters to carry over a certain amount of uncought quota. So so that is in place for 2B as well. I I think Peter would be better placed to speak to, you know, what this proposal would add to that provision in terms of providing flexibility.
Yeah, so the so the rollover of 10%, you're allowed 10% maximum is that's by an individual by vessel. And so like I was explaining how our fishery works, most people do their whole block at one time. Might space it out over a number of weeks or a month or a couple of months, but they generally try to do all their halibut in one chunk. And so most vessels, they've already, you know, got within that threshold that they're they're comfortable with. It's the remaining vessels we're talking about, so. And they would individually only be able to carry over 10% of the quota that they would be allocated. So on a block, that's 1% of the TAC is 5,000. So there, that does add flexibility, but this is just to add a little bit more security and flexibility, so. I understand the concerns and that, and this is a kind of a new one, and it's out there, and I would support the December 7th. I think that that just, that gives us enough flexibility. I personally don't know of many boats that would choose to fish that that much closer to Christmas anyway, so. And I don't even really view anyone that was going to try to catch it, then it's just that flexibility that folks need to, so they're not going to do something that's unsafe or still thought.
Well, I I've always been envious of Canada's parliamentary procedure to get things in and done quicker than I, south of the border here. I just, just a comment.
Thanks, Paul. I, so on the motion. I guess, Peter, I'd ask you, how do you feel about, is it worth the, what the the motion is that's on the table right now?
I think that that does give added flexibility. Obviously, it alleviates some of the concerns from folks south and north of us in terms of market competition. Really don't believe, I believe it is going to be a small amount of fish that will be harvested after the closing, but it is hard to tell. But I would be supportive of the December 7th. I think that that would give us enough time. Then that that gives us a bit more flexibility. Thank you.
All right. Neil?
Well, I mean, really, if Peter is supportive and thinks there's some benefit, then I am also supportive.
Okay, thank you. So for myself, similar to Neil, if the extension to December the 7th has some benefit, we will try it out and see what impact that may or may not have. Both on the ability to harvest 2Bs TCEY, but also whether there's any impact and concern for, as has been laid out here in this discussion. So, Chris, and I guess Dave, we'd move ahead with the season extension to, well, actually, I should have confirmed before I say all that, Chris. I should check with the US. Richard, do you support that?
I remember like Bob are hard time doing the extension just because of the process, but understanding this COVID is so huge an issue. I I guess I'll support it to the 7th.
This is Bob.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob. I'm supportive of of the December 7th, the motion I I I seconded.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thanks for the discussion and questions and concerns that have been raised about the proposal. And I think unless there's anything else on that, we can move on to the next one. Dave, you?
Hey, Paul?
Yep.
Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't clear. Did you didn't do an actual vote? I I I had trouble hearing, Richard, was he in support or not in support of the amended motion of December 7?
I'll let Richard speak for himself.
I read some reluctance, I am supportive.
Okay. And just, Paul, I I'll reiterate, obviously, I made the motion, I support it.
Thank you. Good discussion. And so with that, Dave will move ahead with the December 7th extension for 2B.
Great, thank you very much, Chair. And so just just for the the meeting record, it will state that the commission has adopted by consensus revising the fishing period closure closure date, the 2020 directed commercial fishery in IPHC regulatory area of the 7th of December 2020. And so in terms of the suggested regulatory text or language in Appendix A, the amendment here would be 7th December 2020. And with that, Chair, I would, as you have pointed out, we can close this item and move on to Proposal A2. So, thank you, Chair. As indicated, Proposal A2 is a proposed amendment from Canada to amend Section 28 of the IPHC Pacific Halibut Fishery Regulations relating to recreational or sport fishing for Pacific Halibut. The purpose of the proposal is to outline considerations relating to a future 2020 2021 regulatory proposal from Canada to allow 10% of the Canadian IPHC regulatory area to be recreational fishery limit, if uncought, to be added to the recreational fishery limit in 2020, 2021. And specifically, the proposal from Canada reads as follows. Recreational Pacific Halibut Fishery Changes in Response to COVID-19 for Area 2B. Recreational fisheries for Pacific Halibut have experienced disruptions to fishing opportunities and markets and are proposing sector-specific management responses for consideration by DFO and the International Pacific Halibut Commission. The recreational fishery is seeking an underage carryover provision that would allow 10% of this year's recreational TAC, if uncought, to be added to the recreational TAC in 2021. Again, we've provided a number of topics for consideration. The regulatory components and the consultation components are the same as we've heard for Proposal A1, so we're not going to read those. But for the biological and stock assessment considerations, we've combined them into one section. And again, with your indulgence, I'm going to pass to Dr. Ian Stewart, who will highlight some of those considerations for you. So over to you, Dr. Stewart.
Thank you. Through the chair, each year, the stock assessment uses the
Through the Chair, each year, the stock assessment uses the actual mortality estimates from the most recent years' fishing and not the, the mortality limits. This is necessary and important in order to provide the best estimates of the biological processes and also to provide consistency in the reference points. And so what this means is that yield that goes uncought in each year is already accounted for in the stock assessment when, when each year's results are presented. We go through a process of reconciling between what was projected for mortality and what the actual mortality was. And again, the actual mortality is what's used in the stock assessment. Therefore, when we produce the 2021 stock assessment, the estimates of yield in TCEY will already have, will already include any fish that were not captured, even if they were expected to during the 2020 fishing season. Now, the, the increase in yield in the upcoming stock assessment will not correspond exactly to a one-to-one translation of the foregone yield from the year before. And this is due to the processes of natural mortality, movement among IPHC regulatory areas, as well as updates to the stock assessment itself. It's even possible under, under some conditions where we could see a decrease in yield, even where we didn't catch as many fish as we expected the year before. So what this means is that in order to stay consistent with the processes, we have, have we, we've done it in the past and as well with the biology, there are two options for addressing a potential carryover or rollover in 2B recreational catch for 21. The first would be to allow this change to play through the domestic catch agreement. Therefore, whatever catch limit was set for regulatory area 2B in 2021 could accommodate this rollover as part of their catch agreement. This is, of course, a domestic party choice. The second would be for the Commission to make an explicit increase in the overall mortality, either at the coastwide level or at the IPHC regulatory level associated with the 2021 limits in order to accommodate such a carryover. So those are the, the considerations from the perspective of the stock assessment and management process.
Just to follow on then, Chair, the, as I mentioned, the IPHC regulation and consultation components remain the same as Proposal A1. And therefore, as Dr. Stewart has pointed out, that in summary, any fishing yield not harvested in 2020 will be included in 2021 stock assessment projections, regardless of a carryover. And then he summarized those other components. And so Chair, we're simply asking you to note Proposal A2 and continue with discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Dave and Ian for that. Chris, maybe I just add some more background to the proposal. This was provided by the Sport Fishing Advisory Board to the department. And the Sport Fishing Advisory Board, it's been a long time advisory process within Canada. You know, the Sport Fishing Advisory Board is made up of recreational anglers and lodge and charter sector members as well. They provide us, provide the department advice on how to structure the fishery across all species, including halibut, and have provided us as a department with very good information and advice about what their needs and desires and wants are of how they would like to see fisheries structured to meet what recreational anglers, but also lodges and charter sector are trying to accomplish. Similar to within Alaska, and this came up in our discussion back in May around the impacts of COVID-19, where we made some adjustments in response to requests from the US. Due to the lack of international regional travel restrictions imposed as a result of COVID, these restrictions have certainly put a huge reduction in effort to the recreational anglers, but, and has also been very harmful to lodge and charter sector within Canada, and I'm sure within Southeast Alaska and elsewhere. Many where operations were forced to close for the 2020 season, just could not open, or if they opened, it really was not worth it because the clientele was not there. So as a result of all that, the recreational catch within area 2B is currently estimated to be about 34% of the recreational share, and it's not projected to be more than 49% by the end of the season. So this represents roughly 450,000 pounds of foregone yield from negotiated catch limits will be foregone by the recreational sector this year. So similar to what we heard from Peter and, and also from Chris for around the commercial sector, the SFAB convened and tried to brainstorm some ideas about what would provide some stability for 2021 in response to COVID. And so their view was that we could do a better chance of maintaining a stable management regime for their fishery, the recreational fishery in 2021. And what would help that, in their view, would be to have an added measure of certainty and stability by adding a carryover of some uncought fish in 2020. So I think, I mean, that's basically sums it up. I would say that I will see if either Peter or Neil want to add anything, but I think the Sport Fishing Advisory Board put the proposal to the Minister and she agreed that would like the IPHC to consider this and wants to do anything that can do to help the recreational sector, whether it be the general angler or the lodge and charter sector to have a, a better outcome in 2021. So I don't know, Neil or Peter, whether you wanted to add anything to my comments?
So I, I think it's in the proposal, but this is just for this particular year and it's strictly due to COVID. So this would be a one-time consideration. That's my understanding. I just wanted to reiterate.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. That's correct.
Paul, have anything to add at this point? You did a good job summarizing.
Thanks, Neil. Bob, it sounded like you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, a question. I think I saw that the, your, your sport fishery here has 880,000 pounds.
Correct.
And you're less than 50%, I think. Is that what we saw?
Yeah, currently estimated to be around 34% of their allocation. And so when we do projections to the end of the season, we're still going to be well under. And the current projection is that we'll be more than 49% under by the end of the season, Bob.
So the carryover would be 88,000 pounds?
Correct, it would be 80s. Yeah, that's right. Maybe a bit less than that, but in that ballpark.
So a question back to Ian. I don't understand the double counting if they're leaving 40% of their quota in the water. If they catch 50% of it and transfer 10% of it to the next year, I, I didn't quite understand how that's double counting. Or did I totally miss your point?
Thank you, Commissioners, through the Chair. I can answer that?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Ian.
Okay, the, the issue is that when we conduct the stock assessment, we will use the actual mortality through the end of the year. So those additional fish that were uncought during 2020 will be accounted for in the stock assessment. So the yields in 2021 will be estimated to be larger potentially as a function of those fish that were not caught in the BC recreational fishery. We commonly have sectors in a variety of different areas that don't catch 100% of their projected mortality. And any savings that occurs is always moved into the stock assessment and therefore occurs in the upcoming year's TCEY. So those additional fish available for harvest will be there when we create the mortality projections for 2021. They just have not been specifically assigned to a particular sector or area.
Then one last question, Paul, maybe it's to Neil, actually. Do you have slot limits like we do in Alaska? Or do you have just a regular bag limit, one bag limit? Any size?
We don't have, yeah, that's a good question, Bob. We, we do have bag limits. We have daily and possession limits. So how many you can catch in a day and then how much you can have, how many you can have in your possession. And then there is also a maximum size limit, but we don't have a slot limit. I, we don't have, you know, a particular size range that you can catch.
Did that address your question, Bob?
I should add, we, we also have an annual limit.
Pause, this is Richard.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, so my understanding is that, you know, the rollover, Ian's explanation, the rollover of unfished allocation, this distributed, you know, the next season to all the sectors. And so not, it doesn't specifically go back to the sports sector in that proportion. So everybody benefits by any sector leaving fish in the water. So my question is, if there's, you know, what's your forecast for next year as far as ability for the sports sector to harvest their full allocation, no matter what that is? So in terms of Alaska, what we did was we, we didn't ask for any additional allocation. We just wanted a more relaxed harvest measure so that less number of anglers, but each catching a larger fish would get to maximizing our location. So in next year's scenario, do you feel that there's still going to be this overhanging COVID, you know, issue with tourism and people coming to Canada? And so even given this additional allocation, how is that going to help your marketing? Versus just applying a larger opportunity, so increasing your size limits, by making that more attractive to attract anglers? So in words, looking at the quality of the fish versus the quantity of fish you got to catch?
Paul, could I offer some thoughts on that?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Neil.
I think those are great questions, probably questions that are on a lot of people's minds. So, I mean, I guess the first part of the answer is probably that we don't really know anymore than anyone else about what next year will look like. It is, it is definitely very uncertain. What I can say is that we go through a fairly painstaking process, as it sounds like you do on the Alaskan side as well, to define management measures for the entirety of the recreational sector, which differs somewhat than the process in Alaska where, you know, you distinguish between charter slash guide and the, kind of the, the broader public angler sector. But in any case, we, we go through a process where we define management measures that to the best of our ability to forecast are intended to align with the size of the allocation available in that year. And so for 2020, you know, we went through that process pre-COVID and defined a, a number of restrictions, maximum size limits, annual limits, daily and possession limits that we thought would keep the catch within the allocation. We, we would probably approach 2021 quite differently if we had an inkling come January, February next year that COVID was still going to be a potential influence on the, the number of anglers or the amount of fishing effort, the number of visitors, et cetera. So, you know, if the allocation looks different with or without carryover, it would influence how liberal those management measures are.
Can I just interrupt for a sec? There's a lot of background noise. People could put their phones on mute unless they're speaking. Sorry, Neil, they interrupted you. Did you have more?
I think I might be the source of the background noise. I'm trying to keep a five-year-old entertained fifteen feet behind me. So I don't think there's too much more to add. At least, maybe not at this point.
Okay, thanks, Neil.
Paul, I have a follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
So getting back to Ian's, there's, there's two options, that the allocation, if it was rolled over, has to come out from somewhere. Either it has to come out from, you know, a catch sharing plan between, you know, in your case, the recreational and the commercial fisheries, or it has to come out from the coastwide. What is your thoughts on that?
So Ian, I don't know if you heard that, but I think the question is directed toward Ian, if he had an answer.
No, it's actually directed towards, towards the Canadian Commissioners. In other words, Ian's discussion said that the fish, if it was rolled over, would have to come from somewhere and would have to either come from a catch sharing plan, and in this case, Commercial Fishery Canada would have to move some allocation or to the recreational fisheries for that rollover, or would have to come out from the coastwide, and it should involve the whole coastwide, you know, TCEY. So what are your thoughts on that? I mean, the fish are, has to come from somewhere, I guess, in Ian's explanation.
Paul, it's Neil. I could offer a couple of thoughts there.
Yeah, I had one too, but go ahead.
So I don't think we're contemplating changes to our domestic allocation policies for reasons that probably anyone listening can understand. And with respect to, you know, how we handle this, I guess my observation is we have a number of pretty significant sources of uncertainty or noise in the system when it comes to what we set as our estimated total mortality versus what ends up getting incurred. We have a commercial carryover arrangement that exists on both sides of the border. And I, it would be helpful, I think, to understand a little more on how we manage that example of a carryover in the context of building it into our planning for the subsequent year from an IPHC perspective. And I guess, you know, the amount of that we're talking about here is significantly less, I think, than some of the other sources of uncertainty in what our total mortality ends up being. And that's probably part of what will inform, at least my perspective, on what we might be willing to contemplate for a one-year arrangement that accommodates some very unusual circumstances. I mean, obviously, that's couched within an interest in being as precise as we possibly can be and continually improving on managing every source of mortality to a specified amount. But I guess those are some of the kind of counterbalancing considerations that go with.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah.
A question to Neil, this is Bob. A question to Neil, this is Bob. Has Canada liberalized any of their, what I want to say, bag limit on halibut this summer to try to get more activity? And is this catch driven by tourism?
Both good questions, Bob. So we did make a change in mid-August where the daily limit was changed from one to two. In terms of where the, like what makes up the the catch, the, you know, there's, there's certainly a significant charter, guide, lodge component to the fishing effort for halibut. I don't know that we have ever really pinned down how much of the total catch that makes up. But, you know, I think anecdotally, it's this year may be indicating how important that section of the total catch is to the recreational catch. Because so many lodges and guides have either seen, you know, very large reductions in their business or have not opened. And one area in particular, Haida Gwaii, which is a major source of halibut recreational catch in B.C., has been closed for almost the entirety of the year due to local outbreaks of COVID. And so the lodges there, with the exception of a few who opened for a very short period, have been closed for the whole season. Maybe the one other thing I should mention, which I think folks are aware of, but we also did introduce an overage recovery policy for the recreational fishery where if the sector exceeds its allocation because of our, because of the imprecision in managing it to a specific number, we've implemented a policy where that would be recovered out of the subsequent year's allocation to that sector as a means of ensuring that year over year, we are balancing out their catch with their allocation.
Thanks, Neil. So, Bob, I think that addresses your question. I think the other point that Neil was talking about is, yes, we did make some changes in season. But the basic answer is our toolbox is rather limited in Canada to make adjustments. And so we did what we could. And that provided some assistance, but clearly not enough. And given the travel restrictions, both domestically and internationally, and as Neil outlined, many of these lodges never opened, certainly many of the places. But I typically see where people go to go fishing for halibut on the west coast or even on the north coast of Vancouver Island, where in many years you would have to have a longstanding reservation before you could even move your boat and RV there, if that's what you wanted to do. There were lots of vacancies. People were just not there. And as a result, the catch is down currently thirty-four and probably be in the neighborhood of fifty by the time we close out the season.
Paul, Chris here.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. Couple of math questions, I guess. Follow-up on Rich's question. I mean, I, as I said earlier, I'm all for maximum discretion for each party, U.S. Canada, to catch and manage halibut. Maximum flexibility for how they catch and how they manage their fish, as long as it's harm neutral to the other party. I'm still a little confused about the math. I think I understand Ian's point. Unc caught fish will go back into the assessment modeling exercise and to some degree, increase the overall amount available for everybody the next year. And I don't know what, I don't think it's one to one, of course, but at some point, that fish has to come, whatever the amount of poundage is, and that's my second math question. Whatever that amount is, it's gonna either come off the top and everybody's gonna pay us a small tax to support it, or it's somehow would come off of Canada's, whatever we decide Canada's number is next year. So I'm still a little confused on that. And even though it may be a small amount, my confusion causes concern. But that leads to my second math question is, how many pounds are we actually talking about being potentially rolled over? Because as I read the proposal, it's ten percent of any uncought tack. If the tax eight hundred and eighty thousand, and I think you said you projected stressfully half of it, you're talking ten percent of four hundred and forty thousand, which would be a maximum potential rollover of about forty-four thousand pounds. Am I, is that correct?
I understood it to be ten percent of the tack that would be carried forward to roughly eighty-eight thousand pounds.
Yeah, because it says of the tack, if uncought, to be added to the recreational tack. Because otherwise, you could come one pound short of the tack and roll over eighty-eight thousand pounds. So that doesn't make sense to me. Now, if you're talking ten percent of the uncought amount, then that makes more sense.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, otherwise, I wouldn't want to see. Go ahead.
Not sure.
If I could try to clarify, it's Neil here. My understanding is, so if there is an uncought portion of the tack, the proposal is to roll it over, but up to only ten percent of what the total tack is. So if, if like you said, Chris, there were actually, you know, thirty pounds left, the proposal would allow for thirty pounds to be rolled over. But if there were four hundred and forty thousand pounds left, the proposal would only allow for eighty-eight or eighty-nine thousand pounds, whatever the exact number is, to be rolled over because that's ten percent of what the total allocation was.
Paul, this is Richard.
Yeah, Richard.
Yes, I have another process question. Whether this action needs to be done here at this meeting? Or could it be taken up at the annual meeting? Because this, this rollover and regulation doesn't really need to be done in the 2020 season, right? It's the 2021 season, correct?
Yeah, that's the intent.
So we could table this into the interim meeting, annual meeting?
That is a possibility. Just before going there, I see that Dave just identified that there are some comments online. Maybe we could go to those and Dave could read those out and we could come back to your question then, Richard.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair. So we currently have four comments and questions. The first from Peggy Parker. Why is action on this proposal included in this special session when it could be included in proposals for the annual meeting in 2021? And I think you're having that discussion right at the moment. Another question from Douglas Doggett. Would any fish taken after December twenty twenty be taken off the Canadian TAC or strictly from the commercial TAC? If the uncought fish would be double counted and inconsistent with the process, why does this not apply to individual vessel quotas in the commercial fishery? The third question and comment is from Chuck Ashcroft, and it states, it would be helpful if the Commission could advise how 2B commercial carryover of an underage provision is treated. It is double counting. Is it double counting? Is it problematic for assessment? Our proposal is designed to mirror that of the commercial carryover potential. And then a final from Robert Pockness. I have concerns with the proposal to carry ten percent of the recreational Pacific halibut allocation. I recognize COVID has caused hardships for many recreational fishing businesses in IPHC area two B. Nevertheless, this cannot be used to justify adopting measures that increase uncertainty and risk to the resource. Recreational halibut catch estimates are incomplete and uncertain due to the limitations of recreational catch monitoring and reporting programs. The in-season management approach is limited in its ability to produce timely estimates of recreational halibut mortalities, and there is uncertainty in forecasting catch. For these reasons, a precautionary must be taken to the management of the recreational halibut fishery. Carryover provisions should not be considered until we are confident that we have precise and accurate estimates of the recreational Pacific halibut catch in 2B. While the pound, poundage under consideration may seem insignificant, particularly if considered on a coastwide basis or impact on the biomass, using such arguments is a slippery slope on which we do not want to find ourselves. At some point, the insignificant add up and become significant. We have another one that's just come in from Chuck Ashcroft. It would be extremely helpful if this proposal is decided upon regarding Commissioners early. Otherwise, the recreational sector will have, well, it's a little bit difficult to read. Otherwise, then the recreational sector will have, I'm just gonna read it verbatim. Otherwise, then the recreational sector will have been a difficult situation as our decisions have to be made the weekend after the annual meeting in order for conditions of license to be developed. Additionally, all of our discussions for potential management options would be on hold until we understand whether a rollover of ten percent will be allowed this year. If we know that we will have this capability, then planning can take place once the interim meeting has been conducted. Thanks, Chuck. Over to you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. So, Richard, back to you. You had a question. I must admit, I've forgotten what it is right now. Did we address it or is it still hanging?
Well, I guess that posed a question of whether any action needed to be done at this special meeting, or could it be held at the interim annual meeting since the rollover and wouldn't occur into 2021 season?
Well, I think we heard part of the answer to that in what Dave just read off from Chuck. And I do think there are some questions about how carryovers are treated and what the impacts are in regards to allocations going forward. And I guess a suggestion that I have right now, Chris, is that maybe what we need is a little bit more information that could be brought forward at the interim meeting. Because there seems to be a little bit of lack of clarity. And maybe it's only on my part, but it certainly seems to be on others as well, based upon some of the comments that we need a better understanding of what's being done right now and what those impacts are for carryovers for unused proportions. And so I think basically from a process point of view, it might take some time to get that done before we can address it. I don't think we can do that at this meeting. And I would, I guess, recommend, Chris, that we have this brought forward and on the agenda at the interim meeting. I think waiting till the annual meeting will cause a challenge for us and won't meet the needs of what we were trying to accomplish to provide some increased ability and flexibility for the recreational sector in 2B.
Yeah, Paul, this is Chris. Yeah. I am having, you know, given the situation we're in and coming into winter, it's hard for me to imagine that there would be a huge negative impact in terms of business planning or booking for recreational fishing operations if this decision wasn't made until the annual meeting. That's in January. So there's, if they knew in January that, and it looks to me like, based on my, my understanding now of the math, that it's highly likely we're talking about eighty-eight thousand pounds. And so that's a little more, you know, Neil characterized it as noise, and I agree with them in concept, but yeah, it's almost a hundred thousand pounds of noise. And I'm a little concerned about the accounting aspects of that. I, I would still prefer that, you know, this be a subject for the annual meeting. You know, maybe we can get some of these questions clarified between now and the interim meeting. I'm not sure I see the big, the planning downside of waiting till the annual meeting. But I'm certainly not comfortable taking action on this today.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chris. And I think there are some questions there that need to be addressed. But I do know for the recreational sector, in a typical year, they would be needing to make business plans as far as how they see things unfolding sooner than the annual meeting would be their preference, I'm sure. And so I do think we need to have a discussion about this at the interim meeting and see if we can make a decision. I think rather than, you know, being hard and fast about this right now, I think we need to put some questions to the Secretariat about how carryovers are treated and what some options are to deal with that. Because right now, it seems to me that we do have carryforwards in fisheries. This is identical to what's currently in place right now. So I'm a little puzzled by some of the concern being raised. And as Neil and others have pointed out, this is much less than some of the other carryovers that are already occurring. And it is for 2021 is what is being requested. So I think the agenda for the annual meeting is pretty full. I think we need to do some work, at least at the interim meeting, and if we can hopefully make a decision there, that would be Canada's preference.
Paul, I'm certainly willing to put it on the interim meeting agenda and see if we can, if we can get there. So I'm perfectly willing to take that path forward.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Well, before we break, can I ask one quick question of Dr. Stewart?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just in terms of when they have an overage position, does that mean the fish are not double counted in that position? I'm just trying to think in my head there. I guess they're counted as the total mortality. But who pays the cost of that? Maybe I'm.
Thank you. This is Ian. Through the chair, I can answer that?
Go ahead, Ian.
Yes, so their overages would not be double counted in the sense that they are also taken into account in the upcoming stock assessment. So overages from any sector come out of the available yield that's calculated for the upcoming year. Remembering that the survey information that we get reflects the distribution of those fish, and that's the other important component, is that any overage or underage is subject to potential redistribution by the biological stock dynamics in the, in the rest of the intervening year. But any overages are accounted for. And so to the effect, or to the extent that one or more sectors goes over in a particular year, all yield that's available in the upcoming year is inherently reduced.
Yeah, so that's not specific, in particular areas. Once it goes into the stock assessment, it's reduced over the whole, for everybody, right?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. Thanks, Ian, for that explanation. So, Chris, where to from here? It'll be on the interim meeting agenda. I think, back to you, Dave, there's been a number of questions to provide some clarity about how underages are, that are carried over, are currently handled and impacts of those that we would like some further clarity from the Secretariat so that we can have a more discussion at the interim meeting and potentially leading to a decision at the interim meeting.
Thanks very much, Chair. And so in doing that, this would become a draft regulatory proposal. And the Secretary could, again, develop the implementation notes that we do for each regulatory proposal, which would include those additional elements that you've just highlighted as requests from the Commission. So we can certainly include that as the expanded implementation note for the interim meeting. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Dave. The only thing I would add to that, I think, you know, post this meeting, Chris, with, at least within Canada, that we will have a bit of a debrief and see if there are other questions that we would like to bring forward on this particular issue. And you as well, may. And so I think it would be good if we had a opportunity to submit our questions to the Commission and, excuse me, to the Secretariat, and they can address them for the interim meeting.
Yep, totally agree, Paul. Yes.
All right. Dave, I'm not sure if any more comments came in while we were speaking, and if there are, it'd be useful to hear them before we adjourn.
No, Chair, that's all of the comments that have been received.
Okay, thanks, Dave. So thanks very much for the discussion this afternoon. And we will carry forward with the at the interim meeting. And Dave will probably be in touch with you and via sharing them with the U.S. At the same time, some additional questions we may have about needs to be addressed so we can resolve how to move forward, hopefully with a carryover of any uncought allocation for the recreational sector.
All right, thank you, Chair.
So, Chris, unless there's anything else, I think we would adjourn.
Sorry, I couldn't get my button off there. I do not, I do not have anything else. I don't know if someone else was trying to get the floor, but I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Bob, you had something?
Yeah, I said I'm just seconding your suggestion to adjourn.
All right. I'm not hearing any opposition, so I think we're done. Thanks, everyone, for your time, and we'll chat some more.
Thank you.